Is there a different link for the 6:30 meeting?
There should be.
Meeting emailed to you, Lloyd. Did you find it?
Not yet.
Oh, Lloyd?
Yeah. Oh, there it is.
Did we already approve the agenda?
Yes.
For the full?
Yes.
How can I unapprove it?
How so?
I need to make a motion to remove an item on the agenda.
What's that?
The, remove from the agenda the content for 313 Sixth Street Southwest.
Oh.
I need to remove that from the agenda.
Okay. All right, so we got everybody here, let's see. Okay, so it's 6:31, and let's call a meeting back to order. We previously established that we have a quorum. So, the first thing we've got to do, I guess, is to read us out of closed session.
I move that the city council members certify by recorded vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business men are lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in a motion convenient to closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Robinson, would you take the vote, please?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Yeah, motion passes. So now we can call the business session back to order. Having established quorum, we can begin the business meeting with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Counselors, any announcements? One announcement that I would like to make. I serve on the board of the Charlottesville Scholarship Program as Vice Mayor Wade did for a number of years. And they're searching for money again. They're doing their fundraising appeal, and if you are inspired, what inspired me to make this comment was that I got a mailing from them that was just showing how, it was identifying the scholars that they have provided college scholarships to. I was just impressed, again, just how talented we have, our CHS students are. And also, interesting, I was interested to see how they come from so many different places. We have somebody from Nepal who is getting a scholarship to go on to college, somebody, a couple of people from Africa, a couple of people from the Middle East, and it's a real melting pot and a real sense of, this is a scholarship that helps people advance. It was just really very pleasant.
Yeah, see, Justin, who's someone I've known since he was in fifth or sixth grade, that he's graduating, young man now, is going on to art school in Seattle, so, you know, it's amazing, he's going to just grow up, so.
So, recognitions and proclamations, we have two. The first is a recognition of the OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute, always known as OLLI at UVA. They've been in existence for 20 years and doing good things for 20 years in Charlottesville. They even were willing to have me teach a course for them at one point, so they must be at least somewhat tolerant. I'll just read the proclamation briefly. Whereas an active mind is as necessary to a full life as are social relationships and physical exercise, and whereas the Jefferson Institute for Lifelong Learning, or JILL, began in 2001 to bring educational opportunities and intellectual enrichment to active adults in the Charlottesville-Albemarle community, and whereas in 2005, JILL became affiliated with the University of Virginia and changed its name to the OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute at the University of Virginia, or OLLI at UVA. And whereas OLLI at UVA draws on the resources of its members, as well as other academic and community resources, to organize courses and other educational activities so that members can acquire new knowledge, explore ideas, exercise creativity, and share their interests and expertise with others. And whereas OLLI at UVA has offered and continues to offer courses and educational activities on a wide range of topics, from Jeffersonian architecture to African-American culture, from the history of the Hapsburg Dynasty to pirates through history, from financial planning to an insider's look at Virginia wines, whereas OLLI started with 17 instructors and 98 student participants in 2001 and has grown so that in recent years, OLLI has offered hundreds of courses with thousands of student participants. And whereas during the COVID pandemic, OLLI at UVA kept operating, moving its programming online, offering social opportunities to enrich community connectedness, and creating special presentations available to the public. And whereas our diversity of enrichment opportunities, of which OLLI is a prime example, is an important part of why Charlottesville and Albemarle are consistently named on lists of the best places for retirees. And whereas OLLI at UVA has for 10 years, has for 20 years been a community benefit, offering robust course offerings, exciting trips, and a community of friendly faces, now therefore be it resolved that the Charlottesville City Council encourages our residents to participate in OLLI at UVA's offerings, and hereby proclaim July as OLLI at UVA Month, recognizing it as a valuable resource for our community as it celebrates its 20th anniversary. Signed and sealed this 21st day of June 2022, Lloyd Snook, Mayor. Is there somebody from OLLI here?
As that coming up, Lloyd, I just want to add, you know, I had the opportunity to teach a couple of classes, not whole class, but specific classes, and it's just a wonderful opportunity for individuals in the community, just to get involved and learn more, to continue their learning. There's tough questions, and they really want to make a difference in the community, so thank you all so much for your work.
Thank you.
I'll hand this down to you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Then you want to say to us?
Sure.
Briefly.
If I have a microphone. I just want to say thank you to you all for the proclamation and recognizing OLLI's hard work and the dedicated volunteers, from instructors to class moderators to office help. We are a teeny tiny nonprofit doing really big things here in Charlottesville, and we're honored. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for all you do. Then our second proclamation is to celebrate June as Pride Month.
Mayor, LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, June 2022. Whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual plus, LGBTQIA+ individuals, have had immeasurable impacts on the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country, state, and city, and whereas the city of Charlottesville is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for the LGBTQIA+ people in our diverse community, and whereas the LGBTQIA+ community continues to be a target of violence, harassment, and discrimination, and yet continues to thrive through the efforts of the community itself and through the support of LGBTQIA+ affirming agencies and individual allies, and whereas support for LGBTQIA+ equality continues to grow, education and awareness remain vital to ending discrimination and prejudice against LGBTQIA+ people, and whereas because of the acts of courage of the millions of people who have come out and who have demanded justice, our Commonwealth and community have made great strides in recognizing that love is love, and that no person should be judged by anything but the content of their character. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Charlottesville's LGBTQIA+ community, and is an opportunity to act and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights, and whereas there remains much work to do to extend equality throughout the Commonwealth and the nation. Now therefore be it resolved that we proclaim June 2022 Pride Month in support of the LGBTQIA+ community, and to call upon all Charlottesville residents to embrace the principle of gender equality and to work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional items for recognition? Okay, so the next item on our agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. Is there a motion to approve appointments?
Yes, I would move to approve Laura Knott and Sally Duncan to the Historic Resources Committee, Lisa Woolfork to the Jefferson-Madison Regional Library Board, Richard Alex Stott to the Region 10 Board, Dashad Cooper to the Police Civilian Oversight Board, Al Elias, Scott Hendricks, Ben Cullup, and Lindsay Idison to the Retirement Commission, Allison Brown, Claire Denton Spalding, Michael Grinnell, Edward Herring, and Sylvia Neustraun to the Sister Cities Commission, and Josephine Fishman to the Youth Council.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Robinson, will you take the vote?
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
And so the motion passes 5-0. I should also announce that appointments to the Planning Commission have been postponed to the July 18th council meeting. There were a few people we needed to interview, we just didn't have time to do it today, and at least one person was not available. So, we'll do it at our next meeting, which, because we don't meet the first week in July, it'll be the third week in July, so July 18th. Ms. Robinson, you read the consent agenda, please.
Consent agenda. Minutes, April 4th, council meeting, April 7th, budget work session, April 12th, special meeting, corrected minutes from February 1st, 2021. Appropriating the amount, resolution, appropriating the amount of $15,000 to be expended for the local emergency management performance grant, second reading. Ordinance, amending and reordining Chapter 31 Utilities of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, 1990, as amended, to establish new utility rates and service fees for city gas, water, and sanitary sewer, second reading. Resolution, approving Community Development Block Grant 2021, reprogramming of the Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood Fund, first reading. Resolution, approving Community Development Block Grant Home Program 2022 through 2023, minor budget amendments. Resolution, amending home investment partnership accounts fiscal year 2022 through 2023, first reading. Resolution, amending Community Development Block Grant accounts fiscal year 2022 through 2023, first reading. Ordinance, authorizing encroachment of a building constructed on property at 1622 East Market Street, first reading. Ordinance, authorizing encroachment of a building constructed on property identified on Tax Map 30 as partial 24 at the corner of Delavan Street and an unnamed 12-foot alley, together referred to as 301 Seventh Street Southwest, first reading. Reconstituting the Charlottesville Planning Commission and appropriating or reappointing its members for staggered terms, first reading.
Then that one was removed from the consent agenda.
Yes. Establishing a pool of funds in the amount of $50,000 to be used for payment of refunds to licensed city businesses engaged in the same business activity as that considered by the Virginia Supreme Court on June 9th, 2022, in record number 210414, first reading.
Okay, so we will now take public comment regarding items on the consent agenda, those items that were just read by the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. In the Zoom webinar, you may select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue, or if you're joining by phone and wish to speak on the consent agenda, you can press star nine. We'll alternate in-person and virtual speakers. Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak on any consent agenda item, the ones I just read, that were just read off?
Yeah, I reckon that's me.
Tell us your name, please.
Last name's Winter, first name's Tony. I am the one for the 1622 East Market Street.
Right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that when I bought the property, I was not aware that there was a six-inch encroachment on the front of the building. I'm now trying to sell it. This is, you know, a major part of my retirement fund. We've tried to keep, we've never totally renovated, because we tried to keep it, you know, affordable for lower-income families, typically single moms. But now the time has come where I got to let it go, and this has sort of been a stumbling block, and I'm hoping that, you know, we can move forward from here.
Right.
I guess that's, y'all have any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Anybody, anybody else? Actually, I guess we would next go to anybody online wanting to speak on any matter on the consent agenda.
Mayor Snook, I see no hands raised at this moment.
Anybody else in person wanting to speak on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing nobody else. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item number 10?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item number 10.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments from council? Ms. Robinson?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0 to adopt the consent agenda. So, Mr. Winter, you're in good shape.
Hi. Does that mean we're good?
Yep, just passed.
Oh, okay. Speak again?
No, we're moving on, but I know you want to say thank you, so.
Yeah, well, you're right.
Okay, we're good.
Do I need to stick around counter?
Nope.
Unless you want to stay for the rest of it. You don't have to.
I saw that look.
I'll call that a hard ask.
I saw that look. So, City Manager's report. Mr. Rogers, would you like to present a report from the City Manager's Office?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, in your packet is the financial report for this quarter. We want to highlight a couple of things. One, the information provided is as of May 31, and we see that there's a projected $14 million surplus for revenue, and we've been talking about that. We are clearly recovering from COVID situation, and taxes are increasing. On the expenditure side, COVID has also affected us there as well, because expenditures are at a slower rate than projected. That's because we have a lot of vacancies in our budget. The market has had an impact on our ability to hire as rapidly as we need to. And so, while 92% of the budget year has passed, we've only spent about 85% of our budget expenditures. That's going to result in a surplus. Because of the delicacy of year-end and agencies still needing to spend some money, we are not projecting exactly what that number will be yet. But, Ms. Hamel, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, just a couple items. When we last met about quarterly reports in April, we were looking at about a $13 million surplus. As Mr. Rogers noted, that's just a little, we're at about 14-8 now, as noted on the page in your memo. The largest increase of that is basically the personal property tax projection. Before, we were projecting at a reduced rate, and since we kept the rate the same, that revenue did increase for the first half of 22 collections. So, that's the biggest increase on the revenue side. Again, meals, lodging, and sales are continuing to impress as they're coming in, so we did bump those up a little bit as well. One decrease I do want to note that was fairly material is on the recreation side. We did drop that down to roughly $1 million. That is largely because during the budget process, we budgeted for the idea that we thought we would be fully operational, and as you know, we're not. And so, therefore, we are not going to make those marks. Again, all of this by line item detail and department is available on the charlottesville.gov/budget under the Budget Explorer on the Quarterly Reports. Just a small note there is that those reports are set up to run quarterly, and so Brian did go in and adjust them so that you can view them. But you do need to look at the fourth quarter, and that's actually a snapshot, I believe, as of about last week, around the 16th, because that's when the month closes, so there are a couple days in June. But we'll be updating that once the audit is finished. So, the fourth quarter report will be a little bit delayed, and we'll be updating that in conjunction with Mr. Cullen's year-end audit report to you, which comes sometime in November, December. And then finally, one other note I wanted to mention is that during our budget work sessions with the CIP, we talked with the school board about their offer to give some cares and federal dollars for school projects that are in the CIP to offset city funding that was allocated to those. We have been working with school staff, and I'm happy to report that we actually have billed the schools and have received about $163,000 for some HVAC projects that have taken place. So, that is in the works, and we are continuing to look at those on a regular basis and bill schools.
Okay. And our treasurer, Jason Vandiver, has included a cash flow report as a part of his financial report. Jason, you want to highlight some items in your report?
Sure, thank you. Just a brief update for you. If you look at the report, you'll notice that we added one more month of data and made some formatting updates, but no significant changes there. It's a report. Obviously, the cash position is pretty strong right now, as we just went through a tax deadline and collected a significant portion of revenue for the general fund. You know, obviously, we're keeping an eye on the markets in regards to investments. The equity market doesn't have any bearing on the city's general fund portfolio, because we're not permitted to make investments there with general fund money. But we are keeping an eye on the bond market and making sure that we have enough cash available to take advantage of rising interest rates over the next few months and into the next fiscal year. So, other than that, no big updates to report.
Thank you, Jason.
And just one footnote to Jason's report, we did close on the bond sale today, which was a big bump to our cash flow. We closed with about $28 million and at a rate of about 3.07, which is a little bit about double what we got last year, but it is indicative of the market and still a very good rate. Actually, the next week, the rates went up about 25 basis points. So, we were able to gauge our sale at a very good time.
Absolutely.
And still working with the AAA bond rating?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. A couple more items. In our last council meeting, I reported on the efforts to address the challenges facing neighborhood development services as it relates to permit processing and plan review. Staff continues to work through re-advertising the multiple vacancies in the department. I have executed an agreement with the University of Virginia's building official to provide staff capacity to assist us in the permitting and inspections process. They began last week. This agreement will continue into the fall as needed, as we continue to recruit to fill these positions. Also, there's been a lot of discussion around the Downtown Mall. I have convened a staff group to discuss the maintenance of the Downtown Mall, as there have been multiple requests. We will be pulling all departments together to compile a comprehensive list of issues and potential solutions that need to be, hmm. That's interesting.
All right.
Okay. We're working to compile a list of...
We're still here?
Yeah, a list of issues that need to be addressed, and we'll be reporting back to you on any developments. We'll be also reaching out to various stakeholders, like the Friends of Downtown Mall, to get their input on some of the ideas we may have in addressing some of the issues that they brought to our attention. That's it. Thank you.
So, is it just council chambers that's out of light?
Here we are. All you had to do was say something.
Yeah, no. I mean, my tablet keeps going off, so.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Mr. Rogers? Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for that very complete report. Excited to hear the collaboration that was present within it. It was good to see that, and I'm glad as well that you all are working with the Downtown Mall folks to really make some, there've been issues for years, and I'm happy to hear that it sounds like there'll be some concrete steps to move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just echo that and would just say, probably will be anyway, but for the Downtown Mall, just underline the importance of seating in public bathrooms as a critical part of that conversation.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
Yes, I hear you.
Okay. Other comments, councilors? All right, so, Community Matters is next up. There are three pre-registered speakers, leaving 13 slots for additional speakers on Community Matters. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. There will be an additional public comment section at the end of the meeting. So, we'll now open the floor to pre-registered speakers. Others wishing to speak may select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak during Community Matters, you may press star nine. In-person attendees, please just raise your hands to be recognized, and we'll alternate you with virtual speakers. Is our first speaker available?
Yes, Mayor Snook, John Hall will be our first speaker. John, you are on with council.
I can hear him speaking here.
John Hall is our first speaker. He is on with council.
All right, you have three minutes, Mr. Hall.
I wish to begin by reminding city councilors of the three contracts I wrote by benefiting for Johnny Angels. You better maintain currently neglected city assets such as Ridge Street Fire Station, Liberty Fire Bill that needs painting. Actually, I could work with Michael Rogers on this, you know, alert him to some of these things. It sounds like that's just what he would like to do. Well, for the remainder of my three minutes, I wish to comment on public transit. Both the city of Charlottesville and Albemarle County are interested in bus transit, serving more people with more sheltered stops as service continues to approach the Albemarle Charlottesville Regional Airport. I have long worked on bus and train shelters that feed electric power back to the grid, which would then be viewed as city and county assets. Chairman Ned Galloway of the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors recently summarized the Board of Supervisors' hope of having Board of Supervisors' hope of having Fashion Square Mall as a transit station serving the world of Almar County. My interest is to work to prevent climate change with solar and wind power-generated shelters, total electric cars, buses, and trains that are climate-kind. Having streets and sidewalks with multimedia phone and electric power, aerial lines, and other amenities would, in my hope, free, you know, using the underground program at Dominion Electric, a free easement given to Dominion Electric with a small fee paid them for each street so that engineers can do engineering studies on each street for an expanded strategic underground program if needed. I wish to be paid to participate with them as a city and county employee. Stribbling Avenue in Fry Spring neighborhood to Stribbling Avenue Extended could be a great pilot project for cooperation to occur so that these above objectives can be realized. I appreciate the time you spent listening, and I hope that we might be able to go forth on some of these initiatives and work together in a very proactive way so that we can preserve our clean environment and have a green city as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Mayor Snook, our next speaker on the list...
Is our next speaker available?
Our next speaker on the list, Mayor Snook, is Kate Fraley. I do not see her on Zoom. Is she in the room by chance?
Nope. Actually, I think I saw some, an email or something coming through. I'll check that. How about Andrew Shelton? Ah, okay.
Good evening, councilors and staff. I wanted to come and talk to you about the city employee that was recently revealed to have been inside the Capitol on January 6th. I'm not going to be using names, but at this point, their identity is pretty widely known in the community, because shortly after the former chief of police's press conference, they were identified by a respected local journalist with extensive documentary evidence about their time inside the Capitol and many of the things that they had to say on social media prior to going in there. They apparently presented themselves as a photojournalist, but I believe that that is simply not accurate, as represented by their own words and videotaped actions. I would like to read to you some of the posts that this individual made under his own name on an account that he confirmed to a second local reporter recently was his. Only one answer for treason. If they were complacent and worked the polls or at the top of government, it is time. Treason equals death. I believe blood will be shed. If there is a plan, we might want to get into it, because the patriots are getting ready for an uprising. If you have not chosen your side, then you might want to do so soon. Left, Antifa and BLM versus right, conservatives, patriots, and Proud Boys. If you don't want to choose a side, be armed to defend yourself. Now, obviously, we all have free speech in this country, as we should, but I do not believe this is fit behavior for a public employee in the city of Charlottesville. I believe that this is something that needs to be reopened and investigated properly. I understand that CPD did some form of investigation. I wouldn't have any way to comment on that, but I believe that there is very firm evidence that this was not sufficient. The video on which he was located was used in the indictment for seditious conspiracy by a Proud Boy who entered the building of the Capitol about nine seconds ahead of him. It is just implausible to me, especially as he was... There is audible on the video, police within the Capitol telling people to exit, and this door, the idea that they were allowed in, you can see on the video, again, in the indictment and in the January 6 hearing, that this was... There were two officers guarding that door who were forced away, and then the crowd streams in. I think that this really is something that needs attention. We all know that we're coming up on the fifth anniversary of Unite the Right, and it is... I can't process how it makes me feel that we have an actual violent rhetoric at a minimum using fascist, working within city government at this point. I don't use that word lightly. I believe that his own words and actions demonstrate that that's what it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak at Community Matters? Is there anybody else online who would like to speak? Mr. Dillhund?
Yes, Mayor Snook. Matthew Gilligan, you have three minutes. You're on with council.
Good evening, councilors. I'm thrilled to hear that there's forward progress on improvements to the downtown mall. Thank you, Mr. Rogers, for moving that forward. I'm mainly here to talk about one of my favorite topics, parking. I was not thrilled to find out that city staff is proposing spending $1.65 million to buy four tenths of an acre, a quarter of a mile or so from the downtown mall, for 60% over the assessment value to provide 39 parking spaces. I suspect that the information provided in your report does not provide a full picture of the parking situation in downtown Charlottesville. It claims that existing parking capacity is diminishing, and I think that it'd be helpful to put a few numbers in front of you. In May, the Market Street Garage at its peak was 60% full on average, so that leaves a few hundred empty parking spots. The Water Street Garage, which is a much larger garage, was 40% full at its peak average capacity. And furthermore, the Water Street Garage, according to Rick Seibert, is 200 regular monthly parkers short. So the sort of narrative within the report you received suggests that there are significant parking constraints right now within downtown is not accurate, to say the least, and is certainly also ignoring how much private parking has been built downtown over the last couple of years. So my suggestion would be, at the least, to hold off on making this purchase. Doesn't seem like people are jumping up and down to buy this property. It's been on for sale for quite a while. Take some time, gather some more information, because I honestly feel like there are a multitude of ways in which the city could spend $1.65 million better, whether it be to create more money for the school reconfiguration, for the improvements that need to happen around the downtown mall, affordable housing. Pick anything. Anything will be better than what's being suggested here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gilligan.
Mayor Snook, I see Nancy Carpenter is next on the list.
All right.
Nancy, you are on with council.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy Carpenter, and I'm a city resident. And as always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight regarding the resolution on your agenda, of which Mr. Gilligan just spoke. You must make a decision tonight about the expenditure of that $1.6 million for a parking lot at 921 East High Street. Hello, but excuse me, like, where are your priorities at? We have an existing housing and shelter crisis. Three of you on this council certainly advocate, for one, good housing, affordable housing policies, or, two, have had knowledge due to the deep work with community members that struggle, have struggled with homelessness, and, three, have been on the board of our CSB, excuse me, our CSB, and know the challenges to housing from that perspective. I come at this response from the mindset of making homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. We need, we need a year-round, low-barrier emergency shelter for men, women, and families. The data from the past two years has certainly demonstrated that non-congregate shelter is a public health strategy that is beneficial to the community on so many levels. Think about it. You would be spending as much per parking space as the costs involved in someone being homeless in this community for a full year. However, how does that make sense? How does it really make sense? These parking spaces will not be utilized 24 hours per day, but someone who is not housed and needs shelter is homeless all 24 of those hours. And, you know, how can you tell us that you're being of service if you ignore being of service to the most marginalized in our community when you have an ability to do something? The action steps I would suggest. One, direct the interim city manager, Mr. Rogers, to investigate the use of four-wheel e-bikes, enclosed e-bikes, to move people from the Market Street or Water Street garages due to age or mobility status. That's in my forefront, because UPS is talking about that strategy for deliveries. Ask the TJPDC to work with other counties who are getting a share of that $2.6 million grant the TJPDC will receive, and have them remit a small portion of their share back to the TJPDC to work in conjunction with establishing an emergency shelter. And my third ask is, do not purchase that lot at this time. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Mayor Snook, our next speaker on Zoom is Katrina Turner. Katrina, you are on with council.
Good evening, Katrina Turner. I'm also calling about the employee who attended the insurrection. I want to deal everything Mr. Shelton said, but I also want to know if everyone on the dais knew about this gentleman, because, Mayor Snook, you spoke about him and said he was cleared of whatever because of personal. But I'd like to know how somebody can go to an insurrection, take pictures with Proud Boys, Patriot Boys, talk about wanting to see blood shed, and nothing happened. Did you all know about this before this man was allowed to keep his job? On top of this, I don't know if it's true or not, but we have heard that this gentleman, the same one that attended the insurrection, followed a woman down 29, and at a stoplight brandished a firearm at her. And I'd just like to know, this was 16 days after the insurrection. So I need to know if that part was also true, that this gentleman brandished a firearm at someone. Another question I need to ask, because all of this came up when we found out about this insurrectionist, and I need to know if this is true, that 21 police officers took a leave from January 5th to January 7th of 2021? And if so, I would like to know how 21 officers were let on leave at the same time when the police department has been complaining that we have a shortage of police officers? So I would love to know about those 21 police officers, and if that is true? And also, please, let us know if this is the gentleman that chased the woman down 29 and brandished a firearm. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
Okay.
I'm sorry, DeeDee Smith actually just raised her hand.
Okay.
DeeDee, you are on with council.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I thought I registered to speak. One of the most fascinating things I learned tonight during your 4:00 PM report about the plan to dig up five miles of streets on the south side of Charlottesville, past Johnson Elementary and Beaufort Middle, past four churches, three public housing sites, along the emergency route to the hospital, was when Mayor Snook, after several good questions from your fellow city councilors, decided this would be a good time to tell the constituents who have been contacting him for months that council has nothing to say about what Ryvanna Water and Sewer Authority does in our city. Nothing, not a thing. We're helpless. Other councilors, did you know this? Is this what was redacted in your emails from Lisa Robertson? Surely citing law is eligible for FOIA. So we are to understand that Ryvanna can rip up our streets, can disrupt thousands of people's lives for years, including thousands of schoolchildren whose routes to school will be blocked for years, and they can do whatever they choose. The real irony here is that Ryvanna's board has long been driven by special interests. That's no secret. The chair, who has served for a decade, nice guy, is the founder of Gaffney Homes. County development is his job. Even their lawyers are now development lawyers. I mean, do you all remember how many times Valerie Long has come before city council representing developers? She's now a lawyer for Ryvanna. The elected representative from the county for the past decade has been someone from Western Almar who doesn't pay for either water or sewer. I mean, it's... But just when you thought this could not get any more dystopian, Mayor Snook, you decide now is a good time to tell us. Too bad, our southern neighbors. They will build that pipeline, and you will pay for it. Wow, you trumped. Donald J. Trump, Donald J. Trump in the wall. I mean, good job, city council. This will be one for the history books. Hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anybody else?
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
Let me make just a couple of comments, because we were asked a couple of very direct questions. I will tell you, tell Ms. Turner, I did not know anything about the fellow who had apparently been in the Capitol on January 6th until the most recent spate of stories came out a couple of weeks ago. And I believe, from having talked with others, that there was certainly nobody knew in real time. There may have been some folks who were aware of rumors and discussions weeks later, but not at the time. There was also an issue raised by Ms. Turner about whether the person involved had a brandishing of firearm charge. What I understand, looking and piecing things together, it was, there was a charge that had occurred about five months earlier, where there was a brandishing of firearm charge that was brought, but it was dropped. I don't know the circumstances. I was not involved in the case. All I know is it was dropped. It was not a few days later. It was actually five months earlier. So, and I didn't know anything about police officers taking leave either, so that, just to answer her questions very directly. Anybody else wish to say anything?
I would just echo, you know, the recent stories and posting about on social media is the first time I'd heard anything about this. With that said, I guess a question for the city manager's office either now or at some point is, is there any kind of process through our HR department to have some kind of reinvestigation or formal investigation of the conduct, and if it violates the city's own policy and procedures?
We are engaged in evaluating these recent facts, that this information that's come out, and we will make an assessment when we gather all of the information, but we're looking into it.
And also...
And also, that I understand, I mean, this is, we have only recently had an HR director for the first time in a year and a half. I'm hoping, and I know from conversations with you, Mr. Rogers, I know that you and Deputy City Manager Marshall and Deputy City Manager Sanders are looking at policies that we might not have had in place.
Yes.
And to make sure that the city has social media policies and other types of policies that might not have existed until this time.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So that concludes the Community Matters section. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. And we'll now move on to the action items portion of the agenda. And the first item, I believe, is what you were saying, Council McGill, needs to be withdrawn from the agenda, dealing with 321 Sixth Street? Is that true?
Katrina Robertson said that we could go ahead and she would clarify that we could go ahead with the public comment portion. There is an issue
Okay.
that has to be rectified before it gets voted on.
All right. Ms. Robertson, you want to introduce the item for the public hearing?
Yes. Let me just, all right. So the city council's agenda materials, the, there is a request that has been brought forward by the owners of a lot identified by the address of 321 Sixth Street Southwest. They are asking and have been requesting for some time that the city consider conveying to them a strip of property located adjacent to their lot. And this property is a platted 20-foot right-of-way that is labeled Oak Street, but it has never been improved. It was originally platted in the late 1800s, so it has been what we call a paper street for quite some period of time. Previously, back in 2010, city council closed a 77-foot section of that same old platted street, beginning at the next street over, 6 and 1/2 Street Southwest, and continuing up to what is actually the eastern property line of the lots in question tonight. At that time, city council did not ask the landowners to pay extra square footage of any property that was acquired. For those of you who haven't done this before, what happens when an alley is vacated or abandoned by the city is that one half of the property to the center line of the alley will go to each adjacent property owner. So in this case, a portion of the property will go to 321 Sixth Street Southwest, and the other half of the alley will go to the person directly across the alley from them. The issue that has come to light, thanks to a citizen, is that, so as you'll note in the agenda, the Director of Utilities did, in her comments prior to the preparation of this item, point out that there's a portion of the household superlateral for 313 Sixth Street Southwest that extends into the alley. And where wires got crossed was that normally, so the sewer lateral, I had thought, connected to a sewer main that was in the alley, but that is not the case. The connection runs from 313 Sixth Street, which is, again, across the alley from the persons who are asking for the alley to be closed. And it runs sort of diagonally across just the corner of the alley out to connect to the city supermain that is in Sixth Street Southwest. And so in this case, the standard language for reserving a utility easement that we have included in ordinances vacating paper streets and alley numerous times before does not fit the current situation. So what you have is a situation where if city council votes to close or vacate a platted right-of-way known as Oak Street, what could potentially happen is that if that diagonal sewer lateral isn't entirely on the half of the alley that will go to the owner of 313, that person could be left with a portion of the lateral that is located in the half, the half of the alley that would be going to the owners of 321 Sixth Street Southwest. And so what I would suggest, I have heard from the owners of 321, and I know that they have been in discussions with the owner of 313 Sixth Street Southwest about, to talk about disposition of the property when city council were to vacate it. What I would recommend is that you go ahead and hold the public hearing on this. If the requesters are able to speak to you, they can, they can talk to you during the public hearing about why they've made this request. And then I'd like to ask you to do a second reading of a corrected ordinance at your July meeting. And in that ordinance, if you are inclined to grant the request, what I would suggest is that you simply make it a condition of the request that the owner of 313 Sixth Street Southwest have a perpetual right to access any portion of their sewer lateral that might wind up on the other side of the new property line between those two properties. And that way, we won't be creating a situation where private property owners would be arguing over access to a superlateral that one of the property owners would have had continuing access to were it in this platted street. So I hope that, I know that's a little bit convoluted, but the issue is that the ordinance set before you tonight references retaining an easement in favor of the city, and that is not necessary because there is not a city main that extends up the middle of that alley. The city main is actually in Sixth Street, so that does need to be correct. But as I said, this can go forward for a public hearing, and council can give it consideration. And if council is inclined to grant the request, we can bring back a corrected ordinance for your next meeting.
So if we have the public hearing and decide, okay, we're interested in seeing this go forward, we could simply continue it until the July 18th meeting, and hopefully it'll get figured out between now and then?
That is correct.
And we don't need to obsess over the details of exactly what the agreement would end up saying, because that's what you're for?
That's correct.
Was it advertised for tonight as a public hearing? It was, okay.
Yes, yes.
All right. Any clarifying questions before we proceed to see if there is any public that wishes to comment?
Yeah, I don't think this is as much of a question, so I'll wait.
Okay, so let's open the public hearing. First of all, is there anybody in the room here who wishes to speak on the question? I see nobody. Okay, Mr. Dillhund, do we have anybody?
Mayor Snook, I see no hands raised.
All right. So with no speakers on the matter, the public hearing is now closed. We should, I guess, not make a motion at this point, but is there any discussion that we want to be having between us? Go for it.
No, I just, so I have an issue right now. Until we figure out holistically what we're going to do with the paper streets, the piecemealing of people who know to be able to come to city council or to come to get the street closed, I don't feel it's a fair overall process. And I, because I've known so many people who've tried to deal with these paper streets over the years, until we decide if we are going to either put out a public notice and allow anybody and make sure it's very clear to the public that they can do this, I just, I think I am personally not okay with granting them. Just because I think it's been a very murky thing over the years, and I think we need to do it all together, all at once, across the city versus piecemealing it, so.
I just, yeah, I did tons of these when I was doing transportation planning for the county that, you know, no one knew that they had this easement or whatever on their property until they tried to sell it or, you know, it came up in some type of recording. And the way I approached it is that we used to do it on a case-by-case basis, because maybe a case where the county or the city might need that at some point in the future, or it was providing access to an old cemetery or something like that, which I think was excluded. But anyway, I think it may be hard to come up with an overall city policy because each one, it might be different. That's the way I might see it. So, I mean, with this, you know, we didn't have any public comment on it, but if I don't, if there's no issue with it, I think this is, we had several of these, that this one, that the staff didn't have an issue with, I'll take another quick look at it. I wouldn't have a problem with, but for me, it's probably would be on a case-by-case basis. I'm not sure if I'm prepared to do a whole city of Y one, not unless there's some type of disclaimers in there by staff to, you know, note certain things, but.
Do we know how this came to our attention? I mean, I see who asked, but do we know why?
I don't know why, I just know that the email was received. I will also say that, as I mentioned in the staff report, in 2010, the other half of the alley was closed, and so it may be the case that one of these two property owners just doesn't like the idea that there's a remaining public street right-of-way, even one that's merely on paper, that is adjacent to their property, but, you know, stops right at the end of their property. So it's not clear, you know, what use there could potentially be now that the other, other half of the alley has been closed since 2010.
If I recall, it was probably about, I don't know, maybe 15 or 20 years ago, the General Assembly passed the statute that basically said if the city's going to vacate a road like this, it gets split down the middle, whereas before, one party or the other could say, hey, I want it attached to the back of my lot, or I want it attached to the back of my lot.
Yeah, there are several different ways that issue can turn out, depending on a number of different factors, such as how a particular area got established in the first place. And then, for example, if this were an improved public street, you all may remember that you had a street closing on Brandon Avenue years ago. And once the city improves the street and actually sort of claims ownership and public use through that action of improving it and accepting it into the street system, then the city can transfer that property to one particular property owner versus having title to the center line be divided. So sometimes it can depend on the circumstances, but by far, the general rule applicable to most of these types of requests is that the title goes to the center line, and if the platted area is abandoned, that's where the new boundary line will be.
I just also want to clarify, I'm not saying that we decide each property right now, saying that we have a policy, because I, a couple of years ago, wanted to go get the alley closed beside my property, and I couldn't because the city was no longer doing that. So I just think we should have an overall process ironed out that we can put out to property owners, saying this is how you go about it, and make sure it's just well given out to people so that they know how things have changed again. Because it's, I know from a homeowners who have one of these behind my house and beside my house for 15 years, trying to figure out if I could have that bit of property there and my neighbor and I could share it, it's been very confusing.
Yeah, certainly in my private practice, I get calls all the time from people wanting to know what's the policy? Do I own this? Does the city get to tell me what to do with it? Can I plant tomatoes in this right-of-way? Things like that, and, you know, there are, in fact, answers, but anyway, that's.
I'd note, Dave Dillhund wrote in the chat that someone had raised their hand. They missed the public hearing time, but just letting everyone know, if you wanted them to speak, I don't know if they're raising their hand related to this item or what.
She is the quester. Her name is Portia Boggs, and she is one of the two owners of the property who is asking you to take this action.
I mean, I don't mind hearing briefly from the property owner if that's what's going on. Mr. Dillhund, do you know who it is? Does the person want to speak on this topic?
Yes, Portia Boggs, you are now on with counsel.
Hi, I'm here, and my husband, also property owner, is here.
Hi, yeah, thank you guys so much for your time in considering this ordinance. I guess, I think there was the question about how this came up and how this came on our radar, to add some context. I want to say we bought the property in October of 2020. A few months after that, we were contacted by the city about the specific alley in question here. I guess, either the previous homeowner or some previous owner.
I think the previous homeowner and the resident at 313.
Yeah, they had put some yard waste in the area, and we were notified that it was a fire hazard and that we needed to clean the premises, so we went ahead and, you know, rented a truck, cleaned that out. And kind of going through this process, we realized, you know, this is Oak Street, it's a street that never really was used. We talked to our neighbors on 6 and 1/2 Street, found out that they had been granted the land by the city, and we wanted to pursue it as well. Currently, the actual alley isn't in great condition. There's a tree that fell over in a recent storm that's dead and kind of rotting there. So we were also thinking that if we were to do this and be granted the land together with the owners of 313, we could kind of clean the area up and, you know, make it look nicer. But again, thank you guys so much for considering this ordinance.
Do you know what the owners of 313, what their position on this is?
They, we don't know. We've been trying to get in contact with them. I do know that the owner is homebound and seems to mostly use his yard for trash disposal, so I don't think that he's particularly interested in the property.
Okay, well, thank you for providing a little context for us.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
Okay. So, councilors, what's your preference? We don't have to decide anything for sure this evening. Do we want to carry it forward for the next month and see what the next month brings us? Or do we want to take Ms. McGill's approach and say, no, put a stop?
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, you know, I'm certainly comfortable moving forward, but I also, you know, support Ms. McGill's proposal that, you know, if there is a policy that can be generated that has some flexibility for circumstances like this, you know, for example, then I think it's worthwhile. But I know the staff has a lot on their plate right now, and this probably is not a priority for them. I wouldn't want it to be a priority for them, so, but I'm comfortable with moving something like this on, that's kind of.
Yeah, I am as well.
Okay.
Likewise, I, you know, I can see the benefit to having a more clearly defined overall process, and I haven't, to be honest, I haven't thought about it too much, but my initial approach. my initial reaction is that that shouldn't necessarily hold us up from doing some on a case-by-case basis as they come to us.
Yeah. So, I, I think, uh, why don't we agree that we will take this back up again on July 18th in, and, uh, Ms. Robertson, whatever needs to be done in the meantime, feel free to, to try to figure it out. Okay? All right, so that, that takes care of that motion, we're deferring it. Uh, next item is a request to purchase an adjacent city right-of-way at 819 East Jefferson Street. Uh, Ms. Robertson, that's also you, I see.
Yes, let me, um, let me get to it here. When the blackout happened, apparently it wiped out, um, some of what I had up on my screen. I'm having trouble, um, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble opening the agenda materials here. I'm sorry, I'm gonna need to open them on the internet. I've com- lost complete access to the council agenda materials.
Can I help you?
I apologize. This, this new one is 819 East Jefferson Street.
Correct.
If recollection serves, um, we have been contacted by the owner of a lot adjacent to, um, parcel of land that is, um, um, along Ninth Street at, at the corner of, um, East Jefferson and Ninth Street. And basically, this particular area of land is the remnant of a prior lot that was acquired by the city, presumably when it was, um, either widening or establishing, um, the public streets in this area. Interestingly enough, it's, it's not, it's considered a lot as opposed to, um, a piece of right-of-way, so it has a lot, a parcel identification number in the city assessor's records and it has an assessed value assigned to it, which is not the case for most city right-of-way areas. Um, the value assigned to this particular lot is, by the assessor is, or lot remnant is, is a better word for it, um, is thirty-one thousand dollars. The person who is asking you to convey this portion of, uh, land to them has not offered payment to the city of, um, any particular dollar amount, but feels that, um, relieving the city of the obligation to maintain the property, um, is of benefit to the city and the public generally. It has, it is not the case, um, none of the department heads who reviewed this particular matter, um, had any recommendation as to what city council should or shouldn't do, uh, but they also didn't necessarily have any objection to the conveyance. Number of people suggested that city council should go ahead and, um, agree to the conveyance, but to reserve the right, reserve some sort of easement or something in case, uh, the city should need, uh, to do work on the right-of-way or, uh, put in a sidewalk or something in the, in the future. But, um, you know, if you, if you can think of potential uses you may have for the, the parcel, it's, it's a lot easier to manage it if you own it than, than to try and reserve rights for uses that you, you can't conceive of yet. So, um, again, I apologize, I don't have the materials up, but, um, this is a little bit different than a platted street. It is, um, it is actually a parcel of property that was acquired as a lot, um, by the city at some point previously in time. And a portion of it has been used for public street purposes, but this remnant remains and, um, there's a similar remnant, uh, adjacent to it. And although the city hasn't requested, hasn't received a request for a conveyance of that similar remnant that's a, that's, um, adjacent to it, um, if you do convey this particular, um, remnant, you'll have a situation where, um, you'll, you'll own, uh, half of the block face, but not the other half. So, it's, it is a, um, it is a somewhat, uh, difficult proposal to, to consider.
Ms. Robertson, I emailed you the agenda, the packet, hopefully you can.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, I, so I.
Page 129 of the packet, if you care.
129 or 93?
I think you may be using an old packet.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so 93 on the old packet.
Sorry about that. So, it's essentially a trapezoidal shape, I think that's the word.
Yes.
Uh, on the corner, um, of East Jefferson and something. And it sounds like, Ms. Robertson, you're saying that this piece of land is adjacent to, is con- connected currently with a larger trapezoid, which is beside 814?
Right, just north.
Yes, yes.
And I would just note in the agenda packet that that gives the city control of the entire block facing, well, Ninth Street, northeast, so it's a, aligns with the street.
Correct, yeah.
And, you know, I was, I was out there, uh, today and noticed a couple of things. One is that in this rather slim area, there are two very large, either chestnut or chestnut oaks, probably chestnut oaks given everything else, um, that we would basically be giving up title to. Um, it's an area that, the, the, the trees are huge and they're beautiful and they're, they're, they are worth more to the city, I suspect, than they would be to the neighbor. The other thing I would note is that I think the neighbor's heat pump is on the city's property. Uh, if, this, this, this map may be a little bit, uh, you know, too, too rough to be precise about it, but, uh, certainly, it's also true for the, the people at 814 East High Street, they've got a structure that's on the city property as well, plus some trees there. My own feeling about it is that, that we basically should not be in the habit of giving away real estate, particularly if we're, if it's on a, a road that we may decide we want to have, uh, a bike lane or a wider sidewalk or, and even a number of, you know, a bus stop, for example.
And so, your, the proposal that's before us would be that this individual would have to pay us thirty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars for this piece of land, is that right?
No, he doesn't wanna pay anything.
Right.
But the ordinance is saying that he, if we're going to do it, he will be required to pay, is that right? Does that read the ordinance?
I, I think.
What the, the ordinance has been written to, um, to match up with the request, uh, where that dollar figure is referenced, Mr. Pinkston, is, is in, um, a condition that basically says if this, um, ordinance is approved, the city does not wanna have to pay any, um, fees or taxes related to recording a deed.
I see.
And usually the, those fees are calculated based on the land value.
I see, yeah, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. Anyway.
Yeah, I do know.
But, but, this is set for a public hearing, so.
Okay.
We're, our first step here was to ask if any clarifying questions, are there any other clarifying questions?
No, no clarifying questions.
We ready to hear if there's anybody, is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak about it?
Uh, yes, hello, uh, my name is Tom Garen, I'm the property owner as of about, uh, ten months ago at 815, uh, East Jefferson, um, and, um, wanted to appear before you this evening to just characterize some of the requests that I made. Um, I think, uh, very excited to be, I'm converting the property from a small office into my own personal primary residence. Um, in the process of doing that, um, a little embarrassed that Mayor Snook walked by, uh, today, uh, to see some of the landscaping, uh, on my property, needs some work.
I wasn't noticing that, I was only noticing the city's property.
But I, uh, I just, uh, I wanna, uh, present to the council that I think there's a, an opportunity, uh, at that corner, um, for things to be, uh, considerably, uh, more beautiful for the sake of the city than they are. Uh, if the city were gonna put a bench or a bike lane or a bus stop on that corner, um, I would be the first to stand up and support it. Um, but as of right now, the two lovely chestnut trees that Mayor Snook refers to, um, I have, uh, at my own expense, uh, killed the ivy that is, um, destroying one of those trees. Uh, the other tree is gonna require considerably more expense, uh, in order to, um, get all of the ivy off it that, um, I believe will eventually kill it and bring it down on Ninth Street. Um, I have worked with the city arborist office to ha- have them come out and perform maintenance as the time I made the request. It had been a couple of months and they hadn't come. Um, they did come, uh, I believe in February to do some maintenance, but they, I spoke with them about, um, doing the things it would take to really make those trees healthy and thriving and they said, you know, we're just here to get the branches away from the street, which, uh, I completely understand. Um, but, uh, I mean, I, I just, I think there's an opportunity to take, um, significantly better care of that, uh, piece of land. And, and while I would welcome the city to do that, I would also be, be delighted to do it, uh, as part of my property where I intend to, to be proud to live for many years. Um, I just want to, um, amend maybe what Council McGill said about that I don't want to pay for the property or that I'm unwilling to convey anything of value, uh, in exchange for, um, this property. Um, I am new to the process here, I'm new to the city, um, and so, uh, I do believe it is a, a significant and valuable consideration that I would maintain the property on its perpetuity and pay taxes, uh, on its assessed value. I just wrote Jason Bandiver my check a couple of weeks ago, um, so, um, you know, that, I believe does constitute a benefit to the city. Um, but as my, uh, requesting letter says, uh, I am delighted to work with the city, uh, to figure out, uh, how we can best, um, dispose of, of that property, uh, in a way that, um, benefits everyone in the city. It's, it's quite a busy corner, as you all know. I'm proud to say my employer has a, a, a bank branch on the opposing corner, um, and so, uh, I, I'm, uh, very interested in, in seeing that property disposed for the benefit of the city and if I can contribute to that by being the caretaker of it, uh, I would be delighted to, uh, serve in that capacity. Um, thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Garen.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got questions for him?
One question.
Sure.
You know, at this time, do you have any plan for what you would do with that property should you own it rather than the city? What would materially change?
Yeah, so it's a very, it's about, I'm, the, the, the parcel that you refer to on the north half of the block is considerably larger than mine, mine's only about four-hundred-and-thirty-five square feet and there's a, um, there's a elevation change of maybe five or eight feet between where my house is and where the sidewalk is, so there's just really not much you can do with it. Um, I have had a landscape designer, um, put together a concept of a, of a wall that I need in front of my property facing, um, facing Jefferson Street, but there's a, I mean, I've looked at running the wall if I were to own that land around the corner. Um, there was actually incorporation of a, of a bench that would allow the passing public to sit down. I made an intentional decision to live in north downtown, I know that I'm in a pedestrian area, so I'm not, um, trying to, you know, keep people from traversing, um, my property. I don't wanna make any promises about what I would do, but, um, I definitely, you know, personally prioritize those trees, uh, every bit as much as, um, as, as Mayor Snook does. Um, and, uh, and it is, it is also true that my heat pump is on that land, probably shouldn't admit that in a public hearing, but that is, that is true, it's been there for more than eleven, eleven years or more. Um, so, I mean, that, that would be, I, I'm looking to replace that heat pump because, uh, it's pretty hot in my house right now. Uh, but yeah, um, the plan would be, to answer your question succinctly, the plan would be, uh, to at a minimum leave it as is, I've already removed, there was probably six inches of dirt that had accumulated from sliding down the slope onto the sidewalk and, or it was restricting the width of the sidewalk. And again, at my own expense, um, I had that dirt dug out and, and removed. Um, so, uh, again, material use, not change at all, uh, but I do think there's an opportunity to just clean that area up and, and make it look nicer, again, for the benefit of, of everyone traversing that area.
I don't have any other questions.
Sir, would you be opposed to some type of, um, easement, maintenance easement or anything, um, being placed on it?
Um, I mean, it would depend on the terms and conditions of, of that easement, I would obviously have it reviewed by, by a lawyer, but, um, but no, I mean, if the city were to decide at a later time that, um, you know, it, it did wanna put a bike lane in or, or something of that nature, um, that, that would again benefit, benefit all the citizens of the city, um, I would, I would welcome the city frankly to have the right to, uh, you know, to do that, provided that, you know, the compensation, any compensation that I might offer the city at this time would be, you know, reversed a, at the point when, when the city decided it needed that land for some reason, or as a right-of-way for the city to, I mean, it becomes my, my burden to maintain as I understand it, if I own it, but, um, you know, it comes with all the, you know, city standards for sidewalks and all that, all that stuff, I would assume.
Could I ask a question for Ms. Robertson? Is there a, a way to use the notion of encroachment to help here somehow?
Um, yes, if the city retained ownership of the area, the city council could approve an encroachment that would allow the, the heat pump or, you know, um, porch associated with the building and, and you have, so you had earlier this evening on the consent agenda, a couple of encroachment agreements that do similar things. So, yes, the city could approve the encroachment of the, the, the heat pump, uh, unit, um, if it wanted to do that and still, uh, retain ownership of this parcel.
But that wouldn't really be applicable to like the whole slice of land that we're talking about, the, the whole, right?
Well, normally, normally you would approve an encroachment either for an existing, um, intrusion or for something that a property owner, uh, was bringing and, and requesting you to allow. Uh, things might include, um, I don't know, um, awnings that might overhang a property line or something to that effect.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was, just while, while you were talking, I was doing a little bit of internet research and one of the things that I, I was frankly surprised because, uh, the, a value of thirty-seven thousand dollars was being placed on this four-hundred-and-thirty-two-foot, uh, square foot strip. Um, and it turns out that that's not actually out of whack for the land values right around there. So, for example, the, the house you're in is listed as point oh-six acres, six times as large roughly, at two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars for the land value, or the property on the other side of you, point oh-eight acres at three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. So, uh, one of the consequences of tacking this onto your property is that your point oh-six goes up to point oh-seven, your taxable value then, say, goes up to three-hundred thousand dollars. Um, and while that doesn't, you know, the, the extra thirty thousand dollars may only be roughly thirty dollars a year, it's better than nothing. So, uh...
I mean, I have, my thing is, is one of the most expensive things about doing sidewalks and doing everything else.
Is the right-of-way.
Is getting the right-of-ways.
Yeah.
And by giving up land that we have the right-of-way to, we limit ourselves and ca- potentially cost us significantly more in the future.
Yeah.
Um, this little chunk of area here, it's big enough to make, I mean, in Europe, they have little pocket parks that are bigger than, that are smaller than this.
Right.
Um, and if we give up the land, then we give up that opportunity. And we have ten square miles.
So, the width of the, the piece you're talking about can't be more than about ten feet tops.
I, I don't know the exact dimension, but yeah, my property's about forty feet deep and it's four-hundred-and-thirty square feet in total, so, so yeah, it's, um, it is trapezoidal, but it would be, in my, my house is built right up to the lot line, um, and so, with respect, it, it would be very difficult to make, and with the slope.
Right.
It would be very difficult to make anything out of this land at, at any point unless you wanted to build a retaining wall and, and widen, uh, Ninth Street in, in some meaningful way, which.
I think the other point though is that if we're not, the city's not maintaining the trees that are there, then we need to be doing that.
Well, I, I guess my, my thoughts are similar to, something the mayor had, um, uh, said earlier, I guess, you know, how I look at it is, um, land is the single most valuable asset we own and if we're going to get rid of it, I, in my mind, there has to be a compelling public interest in our reasoning for having done so. in our reasoning for having done so. And I just don't see it here. There's the adjacent property we own. I do think particularly in the context of that adjacent property that there is potentially down the road some possibility of a pocket park used to the city and sidewalk improvements, bus shelter. And I would need to know that those things could never happen and that we're getting a public benefit before, to me, it would make sense to just give away our land for free. And when it comes to maintenance, assuming the city is doing any maintenance, if we give up this, but we still own the adjacent parcel, the city will still be at that location doing maintenance. And the final thing I would say is, you know, it, I, I do believe and trust that it's the applicant's intention to maintain the trees there. But obviously, unexpected things happen. And, you know, if we give it away and there's a new owner, we completely lose the ability to know that that tree canopy and that site as is would be maintained. So as is, I would be inclined to not support it just because I am not seeing what the public benefit of doing so is.
You know, my, my own feeling is that I think that there is probably a combination of things that might be worked out, that might be mutually beneficial. And I would not rule out the possibility that we could figure out something. That is, most of that land will not likely be of any benefit to the city. There will be some pieces of it that we may wish 10 years from now that we had the right to do something with. And whether that's a, you know, a bus stop and a bench or whether it's a, I don't know what, a bike lane or signage or something we want to put up there. I would, I'm certainly not prepared to say yes, but I'm also not prepared to say no never, if that is of any help to you, so.
And I would also say that Counselor Pinkston's idea that he brought up earlier of having some kind of like encroachment for the heat pump that's there, that to me makes perfect immediate sense. I'll just say that.
And I do think we have a larger issue, well, maybe not larger, but we do have an issue if our, if there's maintenance that needs to be done on our land and it's not getting done. So, I know that's not directly germane to this resolution. But it's not right that that's not happening. So hopefully someone will take note.
Vice Mayor Wade, any thoughts?
No, I mean, everyone makes great, great points. I mean, I guess I still being inclined to support it, but I think we have made a lot of points tonight that we're 10 square miles and we, we don't have a lot of this. We're going to purchase a little bit tonight or is proposed to do that. And, but we don't get a lot of opportunities like this, so, I mean.
Is tonight the, just the hearing or vote as well?
Well, I mean, we will have had the hearing, I guess. I guess I should ask, is there anybody else in the public who wishes to be heard on the issue since we never actually closed the public hearing? Any hands online?
Mayor Snook, I see no hands raised.
Okay, so we can basically close the public hearing.
Thank you, Counselors.
And Mr. Guerin, thank you for your, for your contributions. And then the question is, now what? So, we could either have a motion to deny, a motion to approve, a thought that maybe we ought to, you know, deny for now and maybe we can keep talking and see if there's some way. I mean, I really do think that this, this is a place where at some point, the city would recognize that Mr. Guerin has a stronger interest in it's looking lovely than we do. And that, that doesn't translate into complete, we give you the property. So, I'd like to think about what that would look like.
That's the same thing with these easements, right? The easements, the paper streets. So I had one behind my property and beside my property. I had to maintain it. Even though the city kind of owned it, but they didn't own it and it wasn't my property. And, I mean, I got benefit out of maintaining it too by having, I understood it wasn't my property. But that's also part of being in a community too. And where do we, if this, no one's stopping Mr. Guerin from utilizing the property and being on the property and enjoying the property?
Well, in, in, in the context of denying it now, but not saying, you know, hell no never and that some arrangement for some, whether it be encroachment or maybe something is, an idea comes up for some conveyance of the land that does have a clear public benefit. In that context, I would, but based on what's in front of us, I would move to deny the conveyance of city-owned land at 819 East Jefferson Street.
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion, any other discussion?
The only other piece that I would like entered at some point is if there is a maintenance issue, the city needs to resolve the maintenance issue and be clear with the applicant that that's going to be resolved.
Okay.
So you made a motion, you seconded the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Robinson, will you call the vote?
Yes. Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor McGill?
This is for denial?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes, for now.
Vice Mayor Wade?
No.
Okay, so the motion passes four to one. I hope that there will continue to be some more conversations. Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
So, next item, considering a request for the city to quitclaim its interest in a property line gap area at 1110 Preston Avenue. David Jordan, representing Thomas and Tanya Fisher. Is, is Mr. Jordan with us?
Yes, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm the surveyor who did the closing for the, for the clients. I did the survey. In the course of my survey, I found, is in my opinion, the gap of land that the city owns, you cannot adversely possess against the municipality or railroad. I agree with this counselor that there is no vested interest in it then just to vacate those lines. It happened when there was a couple subdivisions and then a parcel was consolidated back in. But when it's consolidated, there was a gap of about 284, 284 square feet that I feel the city had, on paper, has a vested interest in.
So, any clarifying questions before we look at the public hearing?
Yes, perhaps I have the wrong packet, but on mine, it's page 100. So the yellow, again, trapezoid, that's between these lots is what's relevant?
Right, there's a, there's a small yellow strip between them. And that's, and then it comes down the side, it looks like, just a little bit.
Looks like a boomerang, actually.
Yeah.
Right, and so this, the, the notion is that this was sort of leftover or an error in the past?
Well, the intent was that the parcel that Draper Aiden did in their plat from the city to Mr. LeBeau was to be consolidated and come one. The problem is that that's an old subdivision and things have been moved and shifted around. And, and then in the course of recombining it, the monuments we found in the plat to record, I'm finding a gap.
And, you know, I'll tell you, I, I used to do real estate transactions. I haven't for the last 20 years or so. But in this area of town in particular, I found that surveying methods, when a lot of these lands, a lot of these lots were laid out, surveying methods were nowhere near as precise. And particularly, you could see where somebody had gone sort of clockwise around a square and they wound up, by the time they got to the end, they were off by a couple of feet. And it, it's a fairly common problem, particularly in places that were platted 100 years or so ago. So it doesn't surprise me particularly. But it's clear that the city doesn't have any particular interest in it. And if it could benefit somebody else, that's fine. Clearly, we never had the intent to have that, that property be ours. So, okay, let's, first of all, is there anybody in the, I'll now open the public hearing on the issue. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak on it? Anybody online who wishes to speak on the issue?
Mayor, I see no raised hands.
Okay, with no further speakers, the public hearing is closed. What's your pleasure?
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to make a motion.
Wait, can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
So will the property be split evenly between the two properties? This is, the math has confused me a little bit on this.
No, no, there's not going to be a split between the two properties. The parcel land that was a part of the cities was combined into that lot. And it was meant to become one. There's no, there's not going to be a split. The intent was to make that lot bigger.
So does the same person own both boundaries?
What I have noted within the ordinance that's in front of you is that the city will assume no responsibility for identifying the grantees who will be listed in the quitclaim deed. And so either everybody will need to join in a deed or all of the people who own property adjacent to the gap area will have to present to the city attorney's office with a signed affirmation that, that they agree to whoever is the named grantee in the quitclaim deed. But the city doesn't want, I don't recommend that the city undertake any responsibility for determining who should receive the conveyance. But as long as they can all work this out among themselves and provide evidence of that collective agreement, we'll identify whoever they all agree to as, as being the person who should receive the conveyance.
I just wanted to make sure it was being done fairly, that's all. So thank you for that.
They'll need to agree before we'll sign off, you know, before we'll provide the deed.
Good, that's all.
I did want to ask one other question. This plat also shows at the top, it says possible gap between adjoining properties. Is that a gap that would implicate any city issue?
That is not city property.
Okay.
But yeah, that is another issue I found. That's for another issue, another time.
Sure, okay.
And as you all will know, the, the city park property doesn't touch any of these yellow shaded areas. So.
Right.
You know, there's, there's just nothing in this collection of documents that, that establishes, you know, any city rights in the area.
Okay.
Okay, I move the ordinance approving a quitclaim of all of the city's right, title and interest in and to land situated between or among the boundaries of 1106 Preston Avenue, 1108 Preston Avenue, and 1110 Preston Avenue upon satisfaction of specified conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Ms. Robinson?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes five nothing. And thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you.
Next is property at 921 East Jefferson Street. Mr. Engel, take it away.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Item 15 on your agenda is a resolution seeking formal approval to sign a purchase agreement for a parcel of land at 921 East Jefferson Street. This parcel is four tenths of an acre and is currently in use as a 39 space surface parking lot. Staff recommends purchase as it puts the city in control of an asset that will help with current and future parking capacity issues. There are two primary drivers for this recommendation to acquire the property. The first is the city-county court memorandum of agreements that was executed in 2018. As you all are aware, most of that agreement spoke to the creation of a new parking structure that the city was to undertake as part of its agreement with the county. That ultimately, that project was canceled, as you know, last year about this time. The agreement has embedded in it two options for the county to pursue should the facility not be built. And, and both of those involve existing facilities, the Seventh Street Lot and/or the Market Street Parking Garage. So being as they involve existing facilities, there's no additional parking capacity added, yet there's imposed demand from the court use that is required. So to satisfy that agreement, the city gets put in a bit of a pickle of displacing current parkers at, at the Seventh Street Lot, if that option is chosen, or potentially limiting the number of available parking spaces for either monthly or transient users at Market Street Parking Garage. Earlier caller referenced the fact that Market Street Parking Garage is not currently at 100% usage, and that is correct. 60% is, is the number for May. So we're certainly not back to pre-pandemic levels at this moment. However, we, we don't have any monthlies available at Market. We're at capacity for monthlies, meaning the remainder is, is held for transient usage, which has been, has been our history to allow that much space to be reserved for transient, so mall use, business use in and out as opposed to allocated to a, to a monthly user. So even if, even at those levels, if you were to add 100 spaces per the, per the agreement, should the county choose, Market Street, you would be pushing your occupancy level well above 85% just adding the 60% we're at now plus 100 spaces, leaving just 73 for transient use, which would be, which would be less than the traditional amount. So you would be, in some way, be jeopardizing the health of the surrounding business community that relies on those spaces for, for activity. If you just assume the monthly users plus 100 spaces, you would, you would push it over 93% occupancy, which would reduce the transient use even, even further. So even though we're not at pre-pandemic levels, there, there are concerns as we continue to come back from the pandemic. And we are doing that, we are seeing increases every month, small increases every month. There's a potential that pretty soon, if you were to add under spaces to the facility, that you would, you would be at a situation where it could be a problem. So that could easily happen. The flip side of that is if they choose the Seventh Street Lot, then we have 63 parkers that are automatically, need to find a new home. And purchase of this lot does provide some remedy for at least a portion of that. The other primary driver is the, the loss of other parking spaces, other public spaces either on-street or off-street in the area of City Hall. And the primary driver here is the Belmont Bridge, which is clearly under construction now. 50 spaces will not come back as a result of the new method of construction that's happening there. These were free, publicly available eight-hour spaces that were essentially under the current bridge. Those are not coming back once the project is complete. But when we were doing the research about a year ago, we identified 94 existing spaces in the area of City Hall. 50 of those, as I said, are associated with the bridge. The others, there are several others, Water Street, Court Square, East High Street project that add up to that 94. So in essence, we are already losing some spaces, whether we add some now or not. And dealing with that is going to be something that the city needs to plan for. In addition, the only current free, freely available public lot for city employees is known as the Levy Lot, which is currently owned by the Housing Authority and is part of their redevelopment plan. So we will lose the ability to use some or all of that lot in the future. We don't know exactly when. This is one of those properties that is, as Ms. Kelly referenced in her previous conversation with you all, there was a lease, but there isn't a current lease. So, you know, we are essentially using that just by agreement with the Housing Authority. So we have technically no rights to that. That's 61 spaces that is destined to, to be affected or impacted at some point. So. So, in essence, if, if we were to add 39 spots, we, we would still have a net loss of parking spaces in and around the downtown area. You know, assuming the 94 go away, and then the 61 also eventually go away, you're still looking at a considerable net loss of parking. So, in essence, we're not adding, we're simply trying to keep pace and not lose but so many. Other additional factors, this property is within, within a five-minute walk or quarter mile of City Hall. The city owns a number of properties in that vicinity, in addition to City Hall, as well as there are a number of other demand generators in the general area of businesses, entertainment, attractions, things of that nature. The proposed price is 1.65 million with an expected closing within 30 days of approval. The city attorney has reviewed the proposed agreement, and both parties are in agreement on that, should you all move forward with the item tonight. The funding source is the CIP account that was previously associated with the Seventh Street Deck project. So, an account was created upon the signing of the agreement in 2018, and some funds were put into that. Ultimately, not all those funds were used, so there are funds remaining there. So, we would suggest that would be the appropriate source for funding this purchase. So, I think that concludes what I wanted to go over, and be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
So, I just wanted to clarify, I know one of the issues we were facing at one point of having to meet the court's agreement was the potential of tearing down the Lucky Seven and Guadalajara building. And in purchasing this parking lot, is that going to make it so that we do not have to do that?
Yes, certainly in the short term. Ultimately, the, you know, the long-term use of that property is up to the, up to the city. We do own it, we did purchase it in 2016. It had been looked at for many, many years as a potential site for development and parking, going back to a 2001 study. So, it was purchased for that reason. That was the site that the proposed deck was, was to be built on. That's been canceled. The tenants are, are paying rent and are doing good business, so there's no reason to upset that if there's no need to. This certainly provides some relief in terms of the lost spaces, and also helps with the accommodation of the, of the county, the county agreement as well.
I guess to piggyback off that, to me, there's really one central question. To me, purchasing this for the use of parking could potentially make sense in one context, which is the court's agreement, which I think is a bad deal, and we gave away the farm, but nonetheless, we are in that agreement. One resolution to that agreement is to provide 100 or so spaces in the Market Street Garage, reserved for use for the courts during the day. Quite frankly, depending on how that's implemented, I don't think that's the end of the world, but my understanding is majority of council does not agree with that sentiment. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, in that context, if purchasing this resolved the court's agreement in place of building a 10-plus million dollar garage and/or tearing down Lucky Seven and Guadalajara to build a surface lot, it potentially makes sense to me. But if we're going to purchase this, and then at some point down the road, still demolish Lucky Seven and Guadalajara, or build a new parking deck there, then it doesn't make sense to me. And so, I guess I'll just ask Cena's question, is would purchasing this in the long-term guarantee that it would not be pursued to tear down the Lucky Seven in, in Guadalajara and/or build a new parking deck in that area?
Well, I don't know that I'm in a position to give a guarantee on behalf of the city. But like I said, I, I think it certainly limits the need to do that in the short term. Once again, it's only 39 spaces. The proposed deck was to be about 300 spaces, along with some commercial space on, on the ground level. The other element that I didn't really raise in this conversation, but council's been briefed on it prior, is that the Market Street Garage is, is nearly 50 years old, and it's, you know, it's, it's fine, but it, it will ultimately, it's getting some renovations this year, but it will ultimately likely outlive its usefulness and, and need to be replaced. So, something, don't know when that'll happen and, and what the situation with transportation will look like at the time, but difficult to offer a guarantee. But I, I think as we sit here today, there's, there's no reason to consider the raising of those businesses for parking purposes.
Okay. And one, one final question, this is coming out of the CIP account, where some money had been allocated for Seventh Street Deck Project, is that correct?
Yes.
So, is that, is that money that's going to be from this pool? Is that, I thought that, my understanding was that was bondable, but, or is it cash? Like, just clarify that point.
Probably have to have Ms. Hamill jump in on that piece of it. But the CIP, this, this is a CIP account that was funded, I think, 2 million one year, and then a million, maybe two and two, I can't recall exactly. But it has funds available, and it's the funds that we use to purchase the county's ownership portion of the lot that we owned together. So, I see Ms. Hamill's on, maybe she can answer the bonding question.
Yeah, that's correct. We had planned to sell bonds for the parking garage, and so those dollars do still sit in the CIP as bondable, and would still be eligible to be bonded for the purchase of this lot as well.
Okay, thank you. That's, those are all the questions I have.
Yeah, from my perspective, I think that, you know, everything having to do with parking downtown is always controversial. If you talk with folks at the downtown mall, they're like, we absolutely need more parking. You talk with, you know, another constituency, and you're like, no, you've got plenty of parking. And I, I do rely on, you know, the sort of in-house expertise of people like yourself, Mr. Engel, in terms of what you think is a reasonable occupancy rate or utilization rate of particularly the Market Street Deck. And the things that you've told me in the past are, I think, reasonable. And I think what this, what grabbing these 39 spaces, for lack of it, or taking advantage of this opportunity to, to acquire these 39 spaces, basically is insurance against future possibilities. And so, I, I'm supportive of it. I think it's an asset that will increase in value, not that that's the reason that we're buying it, but it's not like a parking deck, which is immediately going to start depreciating. So, I, I support it.
Yes, I'm in support of it as well. I see there's a need, you know, to keep with the agreement and it's not having to build the, the parking garage. I do see maybe at some point in the future that it might be a, a higher use of those two buildings, other than a parking garage, you know, down the road. Certainly can't, you know, you know, anticipate what that will be now, but I don't want to have any type of agreement set that those two businesses would stay Lucky Seven and the Guard, you know. So.
Forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one, one thought that I had, first of all, Mr. Engel, would it be fair to say that though, that that lot is basically pretty much ready to go? It doesn't require a lot of renovation, reworking, rebuilding in order to be able to be used for our purposes?
That's correct.
So, we don't have to invest anything in a structure there, for example, that would ultimately be torn down, wasted, if we didn't end up using that in perpetuity as a parking lot?
Correct.
So, if five years, and I, I want to think about this, because we're thinking about it in terms of the court's agreement, I think the current hope is that the courts will be ready for occupancy in about 2026. Is that, is that about right?
I haven't received an update recently, but I know they're actively pursuing the planning and probably, you know, two years of construction, so that, that seems close.
Maybe 2025, okay. So, in a couple of years from now, it is fair, I think it is reasonable to think that we will have continued to rebound from the COVID depression of the parking. We don't know how complete that recovery will be. We don't know whether people will have switched over to so much working from home that, you know, all, all of the patterns have changed. But in order to buy a property that we don't have to spend half a million dollars or a million dollars to convert into the use we want, it's basically ready to go. I mean, if five years from now, we decide we don't in fact need those parking places, we will not have, I mean, I, I think we will probably have, have profited from the wait. That's not the, again, that's not the reason to do it, but it's not an economic loss that we're looking at as a consequence. So, it's, it's different from saying, hey, let's go spend $10 million to build a parking garage. I, I think on balance, as we look at how are we going to comply with our obligations to the county, you know, and, and part of, part of a lot of the criticism of this comes down to a criticism basically of the county for why do you want so, all these parking spaces anyway? Well, that's not our call at this point. The decision was made, the deal was done. As Mike pointed out, maybe it wasn't the best deal for the city, but it's done, and we have to live with it. So, I, I, I think we just have to go ahead and do it. Anyway, any other discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
Well, just, before you introduce motion, I'll just say, to me, I think this makes sense from the perspective of reducing the probability of needing to build a parking deck, but to me, it does not make sense from the perspective, I don't think we really need more parking. And because it's not being guaranteed that the city is not going to be, be pursuing a deck, in addition to this, you know, I'm not planning to vote in support of it, although I do see the logic of this reducing the need for the parking deck. And quite frankly, I, I hope and would almost expect that 10 years from now, this will, this could be explored for uses other than parking. And my final comment would just be, the other concern I have is just, it's obviously 1.6 million dollars, it's not going to be spent in another priority that could have. And if we have the creativity to spend 1.6 million dollars to acquire land for housing, I hope we can expand that creativity for acquiring land for housing, as well as public spaces.
Very well stated.
Want to make motion, somebody?
Sure. I move the resolution approving terms for the acquisition of property at 921 East Jefferson Street by the City of Charlottesville.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion other than what we've already had? Ms. Robinson?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
No.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one. Resolution, accepting a donated memorial to August 12th and establishing criteria governing the use of downtown mall trees. Mr. Rogers?
Actually.
Or somebody else?
Yeah, I think that was, uh...
It's going to be me with you, Ms. Mayor, and I apologize. I think when the power went out, my camera also did something strange, so please forgive me. What you have before you is a opportunity from an artist, a local artist, who wishes to provide the city with a memorial entitled "The Story of Us: Reclaiming the Narrative of Charlottesville Through Portraits of Community Resilience." The memorial would feature Charlottesville residents telling their stories about events in their lives in Charlottesville before, during, and after August 11th through 12th, 2017. Their personal narratives will illustrate what we know to be true about Charlottesville, which from the artist is that it's a city with a complex history and many flaws, but also a place of resilience, of unity, of art, and of joy. The memorial proposed will consist of approximately 12 to 16 printed photographs on vinyl attached to and displayed within the trees along the downtown mall, and no images of violence will be used. The discussion before you and for your consideration is whether or not council would like to accept that donation. It does fit into some of your vision areas, and again, we, we do know that this is a local artist. Within the packet that the public also can see are some samples of the style of photographs. Those are not the actual photographs that will be used, but it does give a bit of a glimpse as to what the photographs may be, may look like. And for our community, they may recall photographs being displayed by artists in trees from the former Look Photography Celebration, that I believe the last one was held around 2016. Please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, because that very much may be. I'm happy to answer any other questions or concerns counselors may have.
Any questions for Deputy City Manager Marshall?
It's my understanding that it's, it's important to have a council representative liaison to be approving, is that correct, Mr. Rogers?
Yes, that's correct.
And, I mean, I have volunteered to do so if this goes forward, so.
And not, not only have you volunteered, but we volunteered you.
Yes, you all volunteered me, and then I agreed.
Mr. Rogers or someone, if you could talk a little bit about how, if we support this, how we can prevent someone from maybe coming over to proposal next year or this year with maybe violent pictures? How do we, you know, how art is, you know, it may be art to one and not to another. So, we don't necessarily have to determine that, this tonight, but I think this is something that we just don't want to
Right.
get into that realm.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, Ms. Robertson and I talked about it quite a while over some First Amendment issues. And Ms. Robertson, if you want to, to pipe in, please do, but to make a long story short, I think the city, when city council is speaking, different rules apply from if it's a quote "public forum." And so, in this particular instance, the, the art is being donated to us, and we are speaking by, with Counselor McGill's assistance in sort of vetting things, we are speaking by having the art put in the trees. And so, we are therefore not creating a public forum. Is that a, a somewhat accurate summary of the situation?
That is, that is correct. So, this, this, your sidewalks and public parks are what they call traditional public forums, and when people gather there, they, they have a right to, you know, demonstrate or exercise their First Amendment rights. But the, the trees on the mall are not a public forum. And so, one of the reasons that, that this is presented to city council is for you to, to be able to make a decision about whether or not you wish to accept this, this donation of a memorial that's being offered to you. And you get to choose the photographs, you get to choose, you know, the, the messages that they will communicate. And if you review the resolution, the resolution by accepting this memorial also sets out some parameters for what city council itself will weigh, should someone offer a, a different type of memorial or, you know, exhibit in the future.
Thank you.
And I'll say, I, the artist in question is somebody, Eze Amos is, is a very, very capable photographer. He's a photographer for New York Times, and just looking at his, his work, and I've admired his work for years, I'm confident that we will be very pleased with what the public will see. And the interesting thing about this whole thing is that he intends to have like a QR code on each one where you can, if you focus on the QR code, the, the interview with the person shown in the picture will play, and it will, it will create a lot more context. One of the things that we found is, just to talk very briefly about the August 12th problem, the memorial, is that everybody's got their own version of what happened that day. And if you try to, to say, this is what happened that day, and you don't And if you try to, to say, this is what happened that day, and you don't embrace somebody else's perception of what happened that day, then folks get mad. Part of what makes his vision of this so compelling is that he's going to have 15 or 16 people telling their vision of what happened to them that day. And that's far more powerful, I think, than just having an official line or a speech at one presentation or something like that. And it's a much more organic way of, of dealing with it and one that, that respects the individuality of the people who were here that day, and both August 12th and August 11th for that matter. So I, I think it's a great idea.
I would just say, I think, you know, it's, it's obviously a summer and events of August 11th to 12th continue to really define the past several years of our community and our politics, and I think it's something we actually absolutely should memorialize and, and think about, and think about what it means for our public spaces to have some memorial or memory of those events. And I think this is exactly the kind of community memorial that our community wants to see. And I, I hope it can maybe help also lead to a conversation around, and I think it has to be a conversation, not imposed from council, what could a per, more permanent memorial look like somewhere in our community, which I do strongly believe we should have conversations and think about. And all that said, I would move the resolution accepting a donated memorial titled "The Story of Us: Reclaiming the Narrative of Charlottesville Through Portraits of Community Resilience and Establishing Criteria Governing Use of the Downtown Mall Trees."
Second. I guess we don't have to make it formally a part of the motion, but Counselor McGill, we appreciate your willingness to help as our, as our agent. So, any other discussion?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five, nothing. And thank you all, and I'm sure we will be pleased with what Mr. Amos is going to do for us. General Business, TJ PDC Hazard Mitigation Presentation, Emily Paliccia, Ian Baxter. Are you all, hey, there you all are. Who's leading off?
Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, thank you Mayor Snook, all the council members. Item 17 is the final item on your agenda, it requires no action on your part. I'm Emily Paliccia, and I'm here to introduce Ian Baxter with the Thomas Jefferson Planning District. He's going to present to you all the hazard mitigation plan that was recently completed with lots of collaboration and support from city staff as well as other localities across the TJ PDC district. Before you get started, I wanted to highlight the importance of the work that's being done, or that's been done in terms of providing a basis for our city's emergency management plans to address natural hazards as we face now and in the future. The other significance of the work that was done is how it supports and aligns with other resilience of work that's concurrently being done, such as the Climate Action Plan, the Climate Vulnerability Assessment, the Comprehensive Plan, and the continuity of operations planning effort, which was started in 2019, and we hope to wrap that up this summer using the grant and matching funding that you all approved earlier this evening. Thank you for that. It's exciting to me to see the synergy of all the planning efforts, and I wanted to just make sure this council knows how hard city staff is working collaboratively in ways that are truly inspirational. Involved in this process were staff in Neighborhood Development Services, Public Utilities, Public Works, and Public Safety. And Ian has been a great partner and facilitator of this process, and without further ado, I will turn it over to him. Thank you again.
Thank you, Emily, and good evening, council. Ms. Robinson, would you mind sharing the slides, or do you want me to pull them up?
Mr. Delamont should have that.
Wonderful, thank you. And I'll just ask to change a slide after I'm finished, but, hey, everyone, my name is Ian Baxter. I'm a planner at the Thomas Jefferson Planning District. I'm here this evening to talk to you briefly about the 2023 Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan update. That's been ongoing since about the middle of last year. I want to talk to you about sort of what the plan is, what the processes look like, and what the next steps are. So, next slide, please. The plan itself has a few different purposes, and like Emily just mentioned, it obviously serves as a great opportunity for localities to examine and be proactive with their emergency management strategies and, and plans. So essentially, the, the main purpose is to prepare for natural disasters before they occur, and so we're trying to reduce loss of life, property damage, and economic, disruption of economic activity. But also, there's an incentive sort of baked into it that FEMA requires these plans to be approved by a locality as a condition for eligibility for certain mitigation grants. And so we work very closely with not only FEMA, but VDEM, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, as we coordinate this process for all six localities in the planning district, including all of the towns within the planning district as well. Next slide, please. And so these are the six components of the required sections of the plan. I'm going to briefly highlight some of them and then go dive a little bit deeper into a few of the others. And so first, there's a brief segment about the planning process. For your, I guess for your information, I think one critical part of this is to highlight, we developed and, or put together a working group, hazard mitigation working group, obviously. Emily here is, is on it, as well as other members of Charlottesville city staff, as well as representatives from all six of our localities and other stakeholders from the state. And so that working group really guided this process, and I'll get to the hazard identification component that they put together for the region, but, but that was sort of the main, they're the main driver of this process, and the TJ PDC simply as a facilitator of that process. There's general information about the community's, you know, economic activity, topography, geography, and then really, I think the two most important, two of the most important parts of the plan are the Hazard Identification Analysis, also known as the HIRA, which is essentially a ranking of all of the natural hazards in terms of relative risk to the region. There's a variety of different data sources that's used to make that determination, but that determination is a collaborative effort from all of the localities in the planning district. Next, a vulnerability assessment is essentially an analysis of the impacts that hazards can have, whether they be in, put in terms of loss of life or economic disruption that each natural hazard could have. A capabilities assessment is a survey of local capacity to not only mitigate or prepare for natural hazards. And then finally, a mitigation strategy section, and in this section, each locality presents mitigation action items that they will hope to complete over the next five years to prepare for natural hazards. Slide. This is a brief overview of our timeline. As you can see, June of 2022, the draft plan is up for public comment, so it is available now on the TJ PDC website, and public comment closes on June 30th. But you can see briefly here some of the public engagement that we've, we've had. We had a public survey, a public meeting, as well as presentations to a few local emergency planning committees across the region, and obviously, working very closely and pretty much monthly with the working group over the last six or nine months. After this, we're going to hope to plan, or we're planning to submit the plan to VDEM after the public comment period ends, and then after approval from them to FEMA. And then I'll, I'll sort of say what comes after that later. Next slide. So this is the HIRA that, this is the HIRA that I was mentioning earlier, and so essentially it describes all natural hazards in the planning districts and provides an analysis on where they occur, the extent that they occur, severity and probability. So it's essentially a big list of data that gives, you know, information on the frequency, sort of what I was just describing, how, how damaging are these events, how often do they happen? And it, the, the actual matrix itself we developed is, is based on a template from Kaiser Permanente, and if you go to the next slide, you can see the draft 2023 HIRA matrix. And so the way that this was put together is after, there's a good amount of data included in the council packet, as well as on some of the slides that'll come after this, but essentially TJ PDC staff works to update all of the data from the 2018 plan, which is, this is the five-year update of that plan. We put all this information together, and we gave it to each of the locality's emergency management, and in some cases, planning staff, and they gave us back one of these matrices for each of the localities. And so this is an aggregate of the regional, of those, of those inputs from all six of the localities in the planning district. And so what, what you can see is that hurricanes, high winds and windstorms, flooding and winter storms and winter weather are the top three hazards in terms of relative risk according to the working group for the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I will say that this order did not change from the 2018 plan, so these were the top three hazards in the 2018 plan, and they, they stayed as the top three hazards. You'll notice the fourth hazard in terms of relative risk is communicable disease and pandemic. This was added, this was per FEMA added to the hazard mitigation plan, and so obviously, the events of 2020 and the COVID-19 pandemic, sort of, you know, it made sense for us to include a section on not only pandemics, but common communicable diseases. Next slide, please. And you can just go through these very slowly, they're very hard to read on the PowerPoint, but I hope that you'll be able to take a look at them within the council packet. I just wanted to give you all an idea of the type of data that we use to, to provide for the working group to make these determinations. So we rely really heavily on data sources like the National Weather Service, NOAA, as well as a variety of state stakeholders, but as you can see, you know, TJ PDC staff organized this information into tables, maps, and you can keep rolling through these slides, because each of these is just sort of a sampling of, of some of the data that we use. And yeah, so basically, a variety of different data sources to help the working group make a determination on the relative risk of hazards. And I'll just let you slowly go through these, because there's a lot of information.
So when we're looking at some of these tables, and Charlottesville isn't mentioned, should we be considered Albemarle in that case?
Yeah, so some, sometimes it gets rolled into Albemarle, correct?
I just wanted to verify.
Yeah, that's a great question. And Ms. Robinson, you can, you can move through to, there's a slide about the data sources that we use that I think is worth, worth highlighting. So, like I was mentioning earlier, we, we definitely rely on a variety of different data sources. As you can see, this is a non-exhaustive list of, of the data sources we use, but you can see, I mean, immediately jumps out that we were engaging with a variety of state agencies and departments, so Department of Forestry, Health, you know, VDEM itself, Conservation and Recreation, Environmental Quality, looks like Department of Energy was on there twice, but they also, they were very helpful, so maybe they deserve it. Obviously, it doesn't hurt to have the University of Virginia in our backyard, using some of the resources that they were able to produce, I think most notably concerning the pandemic. I know they have a really great dashboard that we were able to access, and some of the typical national sources you'd expect, so the National Weather Service, USGS, NASA, as well as organizations like the Society for Civil Engineers. And so these are the sources that we use to, to give the working group to make those rankings for the hazard identification matrix. And so next, sort of the, the flip side of that is, once you identify the relative risk, you have to think about the potential vulnerability of the region. And I think the main thing I want to highlight here is that we used, we really relied primarily on something that's required by FEMA in the update of this plan, and that's the tool called HAZIS, which is a piece of proprietary software that they maintain. It's a really great tool that allows us to make really easy to read and concise maps about how damaging different natural hazard events could be, primarily earthquakes, hurricanes, and floods. And so if you move to the next page, I think there's a really good, a good example of one of these models. This is for, this is modeled off of Hurricane Fran, which was a hurricane that passed near the planning district in 1996. It's also the equivalent of a, of a 200-year event, which in, I guess, hazard mitigation terms means it's likely to happen once every 200 years. So in short, a very, very damaging storm, but this is a really easy way to show the economic, the estimated economic damages that would be associated with that type of event. And so there are a variety of different models and maps like this. I think on the next slide, there's a flood, an example, looking at the town of Scottsville in southern Albemarle and Savannah counties, an estimated losses in terms of economic damage to buildings, as well as a flood depth, so from the basin of the river to the crest of a flood. And this would be for a 100-year event, which is same principle as a 200-year event, likely to happen once every 100 years. So not something that's likely to happen, but certainly something that could happen, and if it did happen, is very damaging.
Is Fran, is Fran the one that took out the bridge on 29?
No.
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
No. That, that was not a hurricane or a tropical storm. That was just a crazy storm on, that hit, that hit Madison and Green.
Okay.
Just crazy, I remember that.
Like 10 inches of rain that night.
Yeah.
And I think the next slide, this, oh, well, it disappeared. This is in your packet, but in, in addition to HAZIS, we use a variety of other different vulnerability softwares. This was a wildfire one from the US, I think the Southern Group of Foresters is the name of the tool, but it should be in your packet, I apologize for the submission. And finally, something that I know, if you have any questions specifically about the city's mitigation actions, obviously Emily is a great resource for that, but we worked with each locality not only to give them resources to generate new mitigation action items, but we asked each of them to update their 2018 ones. And so in a sense, this, this plan update gives each locality the opportunity to kind of catalog progress on proposals from 2018. Obviously, if there's been any staff turnover, if there's been any changes in the direction that, that a locality has taken, some of them might be not completed, some of them might be canceled or deferred. We have all of that documented now in our appendix for this plan update, which is a nice piece of information for anyone who's interested. But each of the action items comes with, or is presented in one of these tables that essentially describes what it is, how much it will cost, who's the lead agency that'll be in charge of making sure it gets done, as well as timeframe, and how urgent the locality considers it to be. And so this process, we sort of facilitated the timeline for, but it was locality staff, and obviously, in particular, in this case, city staff, who did all the cataloging of the old action items, as well as generating the new ones. And finally, just quick next steps, like I mentioned earlier, we're currently, currently in the midst of our June public comment period. We'll then work to submit to VDEM and FEMA. Both of those have, I think, 30 to 45-day review periods, so not a lot will happen on our end in the fall, but we will come before you in 2023, early 2023, if the timeline holds up, to ask you to formally adopt this plan in order to be eligible for those, for those FEMA funds and to, you know, formally replace the 2018 plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or defer to Emily if I can't answer them.
Yeah, my comments, you know, is, is about the public comments, I'm just curious that, to me, it seemed like this is kind of what it is, so, I mean, can the public comment come and say, you know, I, you know, this is wrong, or, you know, this is based on global warming, and, you know, I don't support that? So what do you typically get for, from public comments in, on these type of projects?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I, I can't speak for any past, I mean, this is my first type of, of project like this. I will say the public comment we've received has primarily been from individuals and people who are asking information about how to contact their locality about specific natural hazards or policies, or locality staff correcting some of the information that was presented in there. So making sure that we have, you know, we're, we're dealing with a variety of different data sources, and I'm sure that there are things in there that could either be clarified more fully or, or in 100% accurate, and so this is the opportunity for individuals. So yeah, I guess corrections is sort of what I'm seeing thus far from my end. Thank you.
So will there be?
I will just add, sorry.
Yeah, so just a question, so will there be, or is there now, can we access this on your, on your website, or is it still being developed?
Uh, no, it's, it's available for public comment on the TJ PDC website.
And if we kind of click through, we could figure out what Albemarle plan for one mitigation item, all of that's sort of there?
Yes.
And the other question?
Yeah, so the whole, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, and then the other question I have is, was the university part of this? Do they have, are they integrated?
Yeah, they, we had a university representative on the working group, and they filled out one of the HIRA matrices.
Okay, great.
The thing I, I wanted to add is that I think some of the public comment that has been heard and... heard and sort of factored in, was factored in by way of city staff from, it's sort of indirect comment, it was comment that we received as part of the climate vulnerability workshop that was held. It's, you know, the timing of this, like I said, was sort of synergistic, and so I think as staff, I know some of our personnel tried to factor in feedback we were receiving when we were creating the scoring that we, we inputted. For example, the heat, I think in the city, if you look at that regionally, as a planning district, city of Charlottesville would probably rank that higher, the impact of heat as extreme heat, so than some of our more rural partners.
Yeah, I can see that.
But we did get a lot of comment in that public forum that was done where there were over 200 participants, so.
And yeah, thank you. I think this is one of those things where it's easy to glaze your eyes over and try to put it on the back burner, and then something happens, and we really wish we had been proactive like we're being now. With that being said, I know you touched on a little bit, but is there any more you could say in terms of how do we operationalize this and turn this into next steps? I know that our climate action planning process had a survey about climate risks. I don't know if our climate action planning process is like a key point to operationalize this, or do you see other avenues that we need to be pursuing to, again, turn the plan into action?
I will just say, and I'll let Ian answer, but I'll just say that we're fortunate in that the NDS director has experience with these plans from where it came from and understands how they're used as really supporting material for any asks of federal funding or, the real value that this work brings is that it supports those requests at the state and federal level. The mitigation action items, when you guys open those and actually read them, you'll see they're, in terms of scale, I guess, they range at anywhere from, you know, at the task or tactical level up to these very high-level strategic mitigation items. None of this is binding the city to action per se, but it provides a little bit of a roadmap and also gives us justification when we go to ask for grant funding in other avenues. So it's sort of a bonus tool for future planning efforts and future funding requests is how I view it. And fortunately, you know, you have good staff that are poised to use it as such and improve upon in future iterations.
Yeah, I completely agree with that, Emily. I think that this is really well, it's good to think about this as like a base document for each locality, so you're able to sort of customize, you know, outside of the work that the TJ PDC staff does in terms of filling it out with a narrative, narratives of what has occurred over the last five years or information about the natural hazards, this is an opportunity for, like Emily was saying, localities to align it perhaps with locality specific goals. So obviously, that's what happens in the case of the city of Charlottesville, which is sort of the, you know, I'm very glad that we were able to present an opportunity for that, or at least another avenue for that type of, you know, proactive thinking.
To say that this isn't an exhaustive list of the work that needs to be done with turnover and with, you know, what the city has been through in the last few years, this was, this is a good step at getting that collaboration and that coordination pulled together, but it's, but it's not. It's not exhaustive, and there's other mitigation items that will come up in the next three or four years before the next revision. But I think it is setting us up nicely as a foundational element.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Anybody have any other questions? Well, I think it's particularly appropriate that you're speaking to us tonight. It's the 50th anniversary of the conclusion of Hurricane Agnes having caused catastrophic flooding around here. And I remember back in 1969, Hurricane Camille, in 1972, Hurricane Agnes, we had two 500-year storms within three years, and a lot of us were wondering whether the hydrologists and the meteorologists had lost their minds. We haven't had one since that time, so maybe it was simply an extraordinary few years. But it certainly, for those of us who were here then and remember the concerns about whether Free Bridge was going to come collapsing down in the middle of the Ryvanna River, it's a real problem, and it's one that some of us, some of us remember more than, more than others. So I appreciate the fact that you all have done so much work on identifying these potential crisis points, and look forward to the last few steps of what you're going to be coming up with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, so that is the last item on our formal agenda. Are there any other business items for consideration? Counselors have, counselors have any questions for city management to follow up on?
Just the trees on this gentleman, near this gentleman's property, in terms of maintenance.
And we discussed at the beginning of public comment, but the HR issues, discuss them.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So we're now at the final speaking opportunity for members of the public. Speakers again have three minutes. You can join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar or by pressing star nine if you're joining us by phone or standing in line behind the microphone. We only have one member of the public here, and I don't know whether he feels he's said his piece or what, but anyway, if there's anybody, Mr. Dillhart online who'd like to speak to us?
Mayor Snook, I see one raised hand at the moment. Ange Khan?
All right.
Ange, you are on with council.
I just, I just can't get over this parking lot situation. I mean, y'all really just approved a parking lot while people are sleeping on city sidewalks in their cars in the park, and I know you see them when you're walking down the downtown mall, and there are probably a few unsheltered folks tonight when you came into the building, right? I just, that's just unbelievable to me. Also on that note, speaking of unsheltered folks, are you all going to open up a cooling station for folks in the community who are unsheltered and need to, you know, get out of the elements? And so that is a question. Are you going to open up cooling stations for folks? So that would we need to answer. And then to take both sides' stance on an artist project while keeping a far-right white supremacist on your payroll is just, I don't even know, there's not even a word for it. You all are like, no, there's a policy in place, there's this. That person literally evolved January 6th, right? There's actual photos of that person, and you're like, oh, no, he's an IT person, he can stay. What? 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 After all of this that happened in Charlottesville? Okay, we have a far-right person on the payroll, but you know what? What? You want me to really do better and get your priorities straight? This is just unbelievable, just unbelievable. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Do we have anyone else?
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right. There being nothing further to be done, we're adjourned. Thank you all.